We'd like to welcome everybody. We call the roll order at 6:02. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Dodson?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mr. Jividen is absent. Mrs. McDonald is absent. Mrs. McGraw is absent. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Fouser?
Here.
Okay, we pledge allegiance back in the... Back right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is a visitor's comments. We've got visitors. We have comments? No comments? No comments. Okay, we might as well go on then with our treasurer's reports and recommendations. Chris?
Thank you. Item number one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th, 2022, as presented.
Salute. Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Abstained.
Motion passes. Well, this is kind of nice, calling five names instead of nine. Or however many we're at here. Item number two is a recommendation to approve the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, quarterly investment report, and comparative financial report for the month of September 2022 as presented, subject to audit.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number three is a recommendation to amend the fiscal 2023 appropriations to include a $50,000 increase to fund 599 for the OFCC safety grant.
So moved. Second. Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Could you maybe give a little bit, like, was that stuff that we've already paid for?
So Lieutenant Saylor is going to be giving an update on safety shortly, and he was instrumental in writing that grant, so I'll defer to let him...
Were these things that were purchased or have been purchased and are getting reimbursed? I only ask that because I think we did some purchasing in the last year or two, and then they go back and, you know, they pick that up.
It can be a combination.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's it for the treasurer's session.
Now we go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Call Mrs. Saly up.
Good evening. I'm Tina Saly. I'm the assistant principal here at PLCC. I'm here instead of Mr. Clark tonight. I have the pleasure of celebrating our students of the month for the month of September. We only have one here tonight, but I'm going to celebrate all of them. Our Coventry student of the month is Paige McManus. Paige is a full-day junior who's enrolled in our culinary arts program. Mrs. O'Leahans says Paige is a delight. She is always ready for the next task and ready to learn something new. Outside of school, Paige says she likes to sing, play piano, and spend time hanging out with her friends. She also enjoys walking her dog, and if Paige could visit anywhere in the world, she said she'd like to visit Italy. So we congratulate Paige. Our green student of the month is Vincent Johnson. But you? Oh, no, Vincent's not here either. I'm sorry, I thought you were Vincent. Sorry, I don't think any of them are here. Vincent is also a full-day senior who's enrolled in the Cyber Academy program. Mr. Shea says Vincent is always punctual, turns everything in on time, and is a pleasure to have in class. He doesn't hesitate to lend a hand to the instructor or to another classmate. Outside of school, Vincent says he enjoys playing video games and watching television. He's helpful around the house as well, and if Vincent could travel anywhere in the world, he said he'd also like to visit Italy because he's a quarter Italian. He enjoys the food and would like to see what it's like there, so we congratulate Vincent. Our Manchester student of the month is Anthony Hughes. Anthony is also a full-day senior who is enrolled in our automotive technology program. Mr. Bayless says that Anthony continues to grow in his senior year and goes above and beyond to help out in the shop in various ways. He's come down multiple times during his focus period to help prep equipment for lab, and it's great that he can always count on him to always do a great job. Outside of school, Anthony says he enjoys playing football, working on cars, and hanging out with his family. He also enjoys watching TV and playing video games, and if Anthony were stuck on a deserted island, he said he would like to take his friend Alex because he's his best friend and could help him. So we congratulate Anthony. And our Springfield student of the month is Peyton Carney. Peyton is a full-day junior who's enrolled in our welding program. Mr. Mariana says Peyton is a leader and helps everyone he can. He works very hard and is as professional as it gets, which is high praise around here. Outside of school, Peyton says he enjoys listening to music and feels it keeps him rolling and motivated throughout his day. He enjoys running and playing sports that he can keep in shape. He also enjoys playing video games sometimes, and if Peyton could travel anywhere in the world, he says Hawaii. So we congratulate Peyton. And lastly, it is a little surprise my pleasure to present to our board members from Coventry is something special. So because collaboration is so very important to us, when Mr. Clark overheard our Coventry board members admiring a piece of artwork that was displayed in our hallway and that you'd like to feature it at Coventry High outside of your fish tank, which was also a collaborative piece that we helped with, he thought it was only right that Coventry should have a copy of the print. This piece was created by Grace Boe, who is currently a senior in our design, communication, and marketing program. She comes to us from Manchester High School, and she participates in our early college high school program. So, our Coventry.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Strickney?
Good evening, everybody. That was a bit longer of a walk than I thought it would be. I want to first fill you in on the numbers, as I always do with adult education. Right now, we are holding an 88% retention, which is huge. Obviously, the first battle is recruitment, and then we turn to battle retention. So we're quite pleased that we're still with 88% of the students that we originally started with. And again, as I think I mentioned last time, right about now is where people start to settle in. They've got the groove going. They understand what's expected of them. Their families have kind of made that transition to supporting someone else who's in school. So we hope to keep those numbers, but I obviously will keep you posted. We have 141 students right now. In the spring, as of now, we hope to add at least 21 more. So my goal of 175 is still there. I would like to have 175 completers at the end of this year. Again, I'll keep you posted. Currently today, Kim Robinson, our program manager, and Ida Daniels-Lidkey, our enrollment specialist, are already starting the recruitment process for next year. There was a large opportunities fair today at North Canton Hoover High School that involved several of the local high schools, Plain Local, Jackson Local. They were all located at Hoover today. So they're out there trying to recruit from a crop of seniors who might not know what their next step is and who might just want to come on up the road for some career technical training. To switch gears, we are putting COE to bed tomorrow. So it has been a full month since they left, and I have been working on adding the revisions to some of their findings. When I click send on that tomorrow, I hope not to hear from them for a while. But then the next time I hope to talk to you about COE is to tell you that we are reaccredited. We don't expect to hear that news until after the new year. We have to wait on the council to have an official meeting, but we will sit and wait and obviously do whatever it is that they ask us to do. But again, hopefully, the next time I mention them, I will have very good news. Now we turn to NATF accreditation. I am going to be working with Mr. Ron Bayless, the best automotive teacher here, and he is going to be helping me work through that NATF reaccreditation in the automotive lab. This allows us to offer all our students, both high school and adults, the ASE entry-level certifications. Without NATF accreditation, we are not able to offer those. And not only is that important for our adult students to go out into the workforce, but it's important for our high school students as a pathway to graduate. Each one of those ASE entry-level student certifications is worth four points. And so if you know some of those alternative pathways to graduation, one of those is a bundle of credits worth 12 points. So if those students manage to get three of those certifications, that can assist a student in a pathway to graduate. It should be noted that Ron actually offers six of those certifications, not just three. He offers six over the course of the two years here. So that is November. Also in November, on November the 8th, is our large advisory committee meeting from 8:00 to 10:00 here at the high school. We have a lovely omelet bar, and we have invited over 100 employers to take a look at what it is that we're doing here at the Career Center and fuel what it is that we're looking to do in the future. That's basically the gist of what an advisory committee does. Also this year, our teachers have been working very hard on a new focus we call scope, sequence, and curriculum. So as we've been working through, we want to make it available on our website. Every course that our teachers teach in their two years here for the juniors and seniors. So all of those will be online. In addition, a general syllabus of what the teachers will be teaching, state standards and guidelines, the approved ODE standards for that particular program, in addition to some sample behavioral expectations, industry credentials that the students will receive, potential college credits that the students will receive. It will be one of the best overviews that you could receive about our program without actually entering the building. So hopefully, this will not only assist our four home schools in helping us to market what the program truly offers, but it will help parents to understand that this CTE version of education is very different than possibly the one you grew up knowing. So when that blasts out, we will certainly let you know it will be available on all of our program sites once our advisory boards approve them. There are three little letters that you're going to be hearing about a lot in the near future, both at your home schools and here. It's WBL, work-based learning. This is a huge new push with the state of Ohio and with Perkins Five. Perkins is the main source of supplemental funding for CTE, so I'm sure you're going to be hearing about it. One of the things that I'll be going over at the advisory committee meetings is this notion of work-based learning. In order for work-based learning to work, certainly, we can do a lot of it in-house because we have lots of experts around here, but also the employers make a big difference. One of the incentives that you might have heard about for work-based learning is Senate Bill 166. It is a tax credit to incentivize people hiring high school students to come to work for them. So that's also something that you might be hearing about in the near future. The state has designated over $2.5 million to offer this incentive to employers who hire students. So essentially, an employer can receive 15% of the amount that they pay to a high school student, or they can receive $5,000, whatever would be the max. So it's a certain percentage of the students' hours that will accumulate. Obviously, the cap would be $5,000, but there is something in it for the employers now. But there has always been something in it for the employers. It's the longest job interview you're ever going to have. The student has several eyes on them, teachers, staff, the employer. And then, of course, also, this student is coming out pretty well-equipped with industry-recognized credentials, professionalism, education, and experience, and all that other fun stuff. But now there's some money in the pot as well, which is fantastic for work-based learning. So we'll be talking about that with our employers on November 8th as well. Last thing, on March 2nd and 3rd, we are planning our second annual career fair. Last year, it was very successful, but this year, we decided to block it into two. With that many employers crammed into this little building, we decided we probably should just go to crowd control and separate them. So we will be putting out the QR codes for signup and some more media so that you know how and who to call if you'd like to sign up. But on March 2nd, we will have all health sciences, arts, communication, marketing, culinary, hospitality, IT, law, and public safety. Well, you think, what's left? There's March 3rd. It's engineering, manufacturing, construction, and transportation. So I think we'll have a pretty packed house both days. You'll be hearing more about it in the future, but if you'd like to stop by, we'd love to have you. Generally, they run from 10 to 2, or, I'm sorry, 8 to 10, and then 12 to 2. We feed them in between, so just pop that on your calendars. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your support. Have a great night.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So the advisory committee?
Certainly.
So you said there's like 100 businesses or something?
Yes.
Do they all comprise the advisory committee, or is that like a subset?
That's a great question. So we have two advisory committees. We have an institutional advisory committee, which is made up of all of those people, but then we also have program advisory committees. So we have an institutional meeting, which satisfies some of those Perkins funding requirements, and that's a lot of the boring data that I get to say before everybody eats, which is great. But then, after everybody eats, we send everybody back to the labs, and that's where the real meat of the advisory committee comes in. So the people from industry take a look at our labs. They look at our equipment. They take a look at our curriculum, our scope, our sequence, our courses. They suggest how they can get involved with those labs. They talk about employment opportunities. They give our instructors tips, hints, trends, what's coming up, things that they're aware of that that instructor that we've polled from industry might not be aware of because they're not on the front line every day. And that really is the purpose of advisory. But that's a great question.
Okay, and then the work-based learning? Sorry, this is super basic.
That's okay.
What exactly, when you say that, what does that mean? So like, high school kid gets a job, like, you know, working, you know, X. Is that considered like the work-based learning?
It could be. So, and that's not a stupid question. I take it for granted that everybody understands those acronyms because that's the world I live in. So work-based learning for career centers, for compacts, is going to be a little simpler than for your homeschool districts, but that doesn't leave you out of the equation. Work-based learning is basically when a student does something that's directly tied to what it is that they're studying. So for us, again, it's going to be pretty simple. The caveat is that they need to have a mentor, a professional mentor, who checks in with them, who monitors the progress on whatever work it is that they're doing, and can sign off occasionally on evaluative pieces. So while it's easy for us in this building, I mean, like I said, we have lots of experts who can be the mentors. We have lots of teachers. We have a phenomenal maintenance staff. Mrs. Hobart's a wonderful expert for our marketing program. So those kinds of things can exist. In addition, when a student goes off-campus and has an off-site opportunity with an employer, that obviously counts as work-based learning. And that's what we call placement, and we've been doing that for years. But this, I think, will be a very new concept to a homeschool. Now, a homeschool can certainly do that, but their version of that paperwork is going to have to be very tailored to the opportunity that the student has. So it's not necessarily that a student has a job at McDonald's. Bing bong, work-based learning. If you get 250 hours, you can graduate via an alternative pathway. There's a lot more steps involved, and that is why I think it's going to be a lot harder for a homeschool to tackle that. It won't apply to everybody, and when it does apply, it will have to be uniquely tailored to that individual student experience. And that's also a great question.
Our kids that are at Coventry, when they earn their work-based learning credit, Coventry gets credited as well for that. So that's another incentive to send students to Cornish Lakes Career Center.
Shameless plug.
Yeah. I'll just say it.
You'll find that the new graduation requirements, when you look at them, are incredibly CTE-friendly. I mean, they're starting to, we say they're starting to raise our street cred a little bit, but there are things that we've been offering for years that are just starting to finally now be validated and recognized as strong content and curriculum that warrants an alternative pathway beyond just that traditional scope and sequence of college prep. We're quite pleased with the graduation, the alternative graduation requirements.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. October, as you know, has been designated as Safety Month by the Ohio Department of Education. We like to think that it's Safety Month every month here at Cornish Lakes Career Center. It's been a focus for us for the five years that I've been here, and we've made significant changes. Three years ago, the board agreed for us to have a coordinator of safety and security here, and tonight, we'll have Lieutenant Saylor talk about some of the steps that we've accomplished under his leadership. And as you know, on October 11th, we had a very serious event, safety event happen here. And I will say that fortunately, our training under the leadership of Lieutenant Saylor, my hero, allowed us to follow the protocols and to calmly have a final result that meant that each of us who came to school on October 11th went home safely. So with that, I'm going to introduce Lieutenant Saylor to come and talk a little bit to us.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Saylor, the coordinator of safety. When we talk about school safety, it just has to be. Kids come to school to be nurtured and educated, and none of that can happen if we don't have safety first. I like working with educators personally because they seek resolution, and typically, they're smart people. So when we have a problem, we set egos aside, and we sit down and we come up with a workable plan. Because my saying is, for it to work, it's got to work. I can tell you, one of my also favorite sayings is, hey, if you do a triple backflip down this hallway, we'll all be safe. Well, that's not going to happen, so we have to get real, and we have to find out what people are capable of under stress. So with my background as a former commander of Canton Regional SWAT and also the safety officer for Carroll County Sheriff's Office and school resource deputies, we took what we learned from watching people under stress, and I met with the staff and the people here, and we came up with workable, breathable plans. Again, we're never afraid to say, hey, we need to change this, but we'll be procedurally consistent, and we'll do this every day in the same manner we provide an education to the students here. Now, having said that, we can talk about some positive things that took place this month because not all things should be aired out in front of folks, probably just with the board and the administrators. But let's talk about a few things. So once again, the team, under the direction of Mrs. Redman, with the help of the treasurer, applied for the safety grant that we're told about. We got $50,000. So with that, a few of the things we're looking at, we needed Motorola radios. The incident Mrs. Redman spoke of proved the worth of those radios. Not only that, but once again, when I talk about how we have to do this as a way of doing business daily, those radios allow us to do business daily in both a safe and professional manner. Second part of that grant, one of the things we're going to do is structural improvements that will greatly enhance the safety part of our building. So once again, we met as a team. We used their expertise, and we reduced it to what we need. I'll tell you a funny story. So I have a counterpart here, Mrs. Hobart, who's in marketing. I call her swoosh and poof because everything's bigger, cuter, better. I'm the guy who comes in and reduces problems down to the things that work, and I minimalize. So when we're working together, it's pretty funny. But the other day, she actually stopped me and pointed out a safety concern that she was going to make an improvement on. And right then, I knew we won. We won. All right. Enough of that, so we covered the grant. Another thing we're going to do, we found out in talking with Mrs. Redman and getting feedback, if we give our students the opportunity to work in our business model and to exercise opportunities to be successful and participate, we'll grab them. So we have things now called student ambassadors. When people come to visit us up front for a program, a select group of kids from their program in their uniform come down and interact with the client or the visitor and take them back to their area. Now, that whole time, they're talking, they're speaking, they're learning, they're making connections. If you would see the improvement of how these kids carry themselves, it's remarkable. Another thing we're doing is stop the bleed. Now, we go to a little more serious side with this, but this is something the students can take with them throughout their careers. We teach hemorrhage control, whether it's based on an emergency or an industrial accident or being cut in the salon, and we teach every incoming junior stop the bleed. To get there, we certify some of our own instructors at the school, and then we use our sports tech kids, both as tutors, models, and sort of a step-down instructor. So we involve them once again in the school, and these kids do a, again, remarkable job. They were given the opportunity to contribute, and they took it and ran with it. This carries on, though. All these kids will be able to help people in an emergency and understand hemorrhage control and how to stop the bleeding and save lives. One of the things we're all proud of are some of the kids sitting right here. These are my kids. They're here. We said, hey, kids, we have a problem, and you have these talents. One of those was, we needed updated building plans that we could understand, not things with symbols that we couldn't read. We needed something quick that we could put up and take care of. So we went to engineering, and we found Colton Terry. Colton Terry, with minimal instruction, took it upon himself in his own time and came up with these great plans that we can all read. Now they're digital, and anybody who's doing the program or for our safety plans can go and get these plans that are just clear and concise. So I want to call him up right now and recognize him for doing that and tell him we appreciate his achievement. Okay, so we got these plans. Now what's next? What's the next step? Well, the next step was, I would go to design, communication, and marketing, and I say, all these placards around the building are no longer accurate. We don't need to pay and go outside our school, but once again, we go to the talent of our kids. And they came up with all-new placards that will soon be installed that are not only accurate but up to date. These are things that they can put in their resume. These are things how they contributed back to the school that you may not get at other places. You get it at PLCC because they had the opportunity to contribute, and they achieved. And that's Colin Bowser from DCF. Lastly, I want to bring up Madison Harrison. She's not here tonight, but she's our second student from design and marketing that helped contribute to the project. So with those positive points and knowing that Mrs. Hobart is now on board, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant. At this time, we typically say if students need to get home and do homework or have dinner, you can leave. But you're more than welcome to stay, of course. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, item 6.2, resignation. I'm recommending that the board approve the resignation listed above.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Before I call roll, I just wanted to state for the record that Mrs. McGraw did attend the meeting starting at 6:11 PM. Thank you.
Thank you to the roundabout that was closed. It took me literally out and around about.
Great program.
Sorry about that.
It's great. They put another one in.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser? Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.3, employment. We have two support staff to hire. Mr. Heffey is replacing the resignation above as custodian, and Sarah Smith is being our student services administrative assistant that we had open for about six weeks. So I'm recommending that the board approve the employment.
So moved.
Second.
Call and roll, please.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.4, master contract ratification. I'm recommending that the board approve the ratification of the master contract between Portage Lakes Career Center Board of Education and the Portage Lakes Education Association for the period of July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2026. It's important to note that last month, I gave you the information based on that, and immediately, PLE took it to their membership, and they voted on it, and it was immediately accepted. It was a very calm, seamless, quick process that I greatly appreciate, and I believe PLE does as well. We don't have to worry about the contract now for a long time. So I appreciate both PLE and the Board of Education, and I'm recommending that you approve that.
So moved. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.5 is the administrative and exempt salary schedule. This falls in line with the teachers. We have a very small but mighty administrative team that I greatly appreciate, and I am recommending that that team gets the same three, three and three for the three years as the teaching staff.
So moved. Comment? Call and roll.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.6 is the Memorandum of Understanding with Stark State regarding our fire academy. This is the second year of our agreement with Stark State. Last year, it's the same MOU as last year, and it worked so well. It is the same wording, and we are doing it for two years. I'm recommending that the board approve the MOU with Stark State.
So moved. Second.
And you said that's a two-year period?
Yes.
Okay. When we first did it, there was, there were a couple of things that we were unsure of. When we first entered into the...
Certificates and stuff. Hi, Mr. Solier. And again, whenever things happen at the time they're going on, you're working, your head's working, you're trying to do right things, you're trying to go into instinctual things to get those done. And then, when it's done, you need to have that reflection of what it is that has happened and what it is you have done and what it is you could have changed or done in a different way. And it's constantly a learning situation. It doesn't matter when it all hits the fan, you still have to respond, and you really, you just can't stop. And I think through the last pandemic, we were going through all these things, and you can think about what the kids have gone through in the pandemic, and then now we're doing these things, and the kids are the ones that are really filling that toolbook. And the different things that they're learning in schools these days, whether they're teachers that are influencing them, or whether they're just, their friends are influencing them. They've got all these things going on, and it's an amazing time for these kids to be coming up and trying to deal with those crazy things that we're all talking about. It's, it is, it's just magnanimous. That's all I have to say. And that, we're on the end of the ship here. Does anybody have anything more?
We need a motion.
We need them to have a motion for the executive session.
They would like...
So moved.
So moved. And a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Just to read this into the record, it's Executive Session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22, "For Details Relative to Security Arrangements and Emergency Response Protocols for a Public Body or Public Office. If Disclosure of Those Matters Discussed Could Reasonably Be Expected to Jeopardize the Security of the Public Body or Public Office." Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is 6:53.
Don't believe any action.